It is 7:30.
Carlos, can you give us just 30 seconds to let all the attendees join?
Sure.
Yeah, they're filing in.
I called this meeting to order and I'm going to tell you that this meeting is held on video conference following our examination of the interior of the library. And due to the pandemic, it would be not feasible to have numbers of people in the library. So Jennifer, would you please do a roll call?
Ms. Krishan?
Here.
Mr. Glavinter? Mr. Parzey?
Here.
Ms. Shu?
Here.
Ms. Young? Mr. Fromm?
Yes, thank you. Are you, you are familiar with the consent agenda? So do anybody want to pull anything out of the agenda or shall we proceed with a motion? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Kayan. Kayan, I need a second, please.
A second, a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Maura. Please roll call.
Ms. Krishan?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Abby's having trouble with her microphone right now.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinter?
You're muted, but we are voting on the consent agenda, thank you. Public comment, Kelly, I don't see you, but you're muted also, so hi. There you go, hi.
Hello, how are you?
We're fine.
Good, glad to be here. Would you like me to present now?
Yes, please.
Okay. So thanks for having me, I'm here to talk about summer reading, I'm just gonna share a Google slide presentation with you. Alright, so can everybody see the slides, okay?
Nope.
Yes.
Great. So as you all know, this is a different type of year than we've had in the past for summer reading, but the question of can you still have a summer reading program during a pandemic? The answer is a resounding yes, you absolutely can. And so the staff have been hard at work planning for summer reading 2020. The first thing you might notice is the dates are a little different than what they normally are. We generally start summer reading at the beginning of June and run through mid-August. This year, because of the library closing and staff working remotely, as well as the uncertainty of just the ability to put things on the calendar and plan ahead, we did make the decision to push the start date back for summer reading. So this year's summer reading will be July 1st to August 16th. It will be a little bit of an abbreviated program, but we're really looking forward to it. And to start out, I'd like to show you the motion graphic video that we've been using to promote summer reading. So this year, our program is functioning pretty similarly to what we've done in the past. Our theme this year is Big Deeper Read, Discover, and Investigate. And that is part of the Illinois Library Association's iRead program. So we are using that state-run program for our theme. We will have four different reading program options for patrons. We'll have a baby program that focuses on early literacy activities and family engagement. For youth and teens, last year, we decided to make the switch from counting minutes or hours read to counting, making sure that you read every day. And we made that decision because we really want summer reading to help bridge kids from the school year to summer and then back into the summer, to their next school year without losing any ground on their reading and preventing that summer slide. So our goal is to read every day for youth and teens to help them maintain their reading skills and also hopefully enjoy and have fun with their reading. And then for adults, the program this year is to read three books. And I think everyone in this meeting is an adult, so I would encourage all of you to sign up for that program. We've got some really awesome prizes and it's just a lot of fun. This year's participation will be all online. We're really encouraging people to use Read Squared, which is our software that we subscribe to, to be able to administer summer reading either through a web browser or an app. And so this is a big change for a lot of people. We do have a lot of participation in the library generally for summer reading. And so we've tried to really up the graphics that we're using on Read Squared this year to make them engaging. We've really also upped the support that we're gonna be giving folks to be able to use Read Squared so that they do feel confident using the online version. And then any incentives also are going to be either mailed or porch delivered. So it's gonna be a big difference. We're gonna really encourage people to stay home to do their summer reading this summer. We are going to continue to have virtual events all summer long in support of the summer reading program. The first one is our kickoff day, which will be on July 1st. There's gonna be a virtual kids concert. We've done a lot of these since closing and they've been really well received. So we're really excited to have Justin Roberts doing a summer reading kickoff concert for kids. And then we also have bestselling author Robert Kurson for adult summer reading. And he's going to do a talk and do some reading list recommendations. So we're really excited about that as well. This summer, we're also doing a Hidden Gems book program where Laurie Siegel, one of our fiction and media librarians, will be exposing folks to books they may not have known about in the past. We are continuing our Bear Hunt initiative with the Park District and the Village of Northbrook and encouraging folks to post pictures of bears or actual teddy bears in their windows so as families are taking walks around town, they can look for the bears. We're putting together a book stroll, which will feature Michael Rosen's Bear Hunt book. And that will be at the Village Green Park and then also featured at the library after that. We're gonna continue to do some STEM programming this summer on video. We're really excited, we're gonna present the video on a Monday with a challenge project for kids in elementary school. And then on Friday, we're gonna do like a Ring Central meeting where they can present what they have discovered from the project. And we will continue to have our virtual book discussions, performances, concerts all summer long. So incentives this year are also gonna be a little bit different because of the pandemic and us really wanting people to stay at home as much as possible. So our finishing prize this year is a partnership with the Northfield Township Food Pantry, the Friends of the Library, and a grant from the First Bank of Highland Park. And we're calling it Read to Feed. So every person that reaches their summer reading goal, we will be making a donation to the Northfield Township Food Pantry. And so the finishing prize really is being able to support that Read to Feed initiative and give to the food. So we're pretty excited about that. We also really focused on local business when we were pitching incentives. So we're giving out coupons and gift cards from a number of businesses. I'm just gonna read off a list. So we have the Book Bin, the New Culvers that's coming to Northbrook, Maxim Bennies, Burge V's, Little Louis, Sunset, Ace Hardware, Marcello's, Francesca's, Grater's Ice Cream, Leonida's, Oliveri's, AMC, and Eve's Hallmark all are participating. And we're gonna be able to provide patrons with incentive. Really focused on helping out our local businesses this summer. As well as our patrons. And then just a little note about how much work goes into summer reading. Like I said, the theme comes from Illinois Library Association's iRead program. Myself and Sarah Russman from Youth Services both serve on the iRead committee. So we did help plan that program at the state level as well as locally at our library. We also have a library-wide reading program committee at the library and it consists of youth fiction and media reference and marketing staff. We meet monthly all year long to plan winter and summer reading. And all staff in youth and fiction and media and reference do work on summer reading, helping to plan it, plan events, and administer it in the summer. So that all staff are really working hard on this. Volunteers who help us prepare for summer reading. We are going to have a remote teen summer reading program. So our teens are still gonna be in. We have over 70 applications for that program right now. So I'll be working from home for the library and the Friends of the Library who generously support the incentives for the reading program. So thank you so much for your time, did you have any questions for me?
Hi, I do have a question. Sorry. Can you?
I can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me now, good. I'm still on my other iPad, so sorry. I love the local business support and the donations. I was wondering if there's going to be like a social media snippet on Facebook that we could all share? Or maybe you could alert us, just so people can see that, I think that would get a lot of good traction.
For sure, like an alert about the summer reading program or about us working with local businesses?
Well, all of it, but you know, what is it, three books? You read three books and you get, you know, there's gonna be donations to the food pantry. I just think that those are things that people are really paying attention to and I just love that part of it. So the whole thing, I guess. If there's anything you want us to share in particular?
Okay, for sure.
Hey Kelly, can you stop sharing so we can see everyone?
Oh, sure.
And Abby, I'll be happy to share that with the whole board when we put stuff, when we have everything up on the website and any of the social media posts that we do.
Sure.
Carlos, if you're talking, you're muted, so we cannot hear you.
Kate, would you please do the staff report? Thank you, Kelly, we appreciate you.
Thanks for having me, have a great evening.
Thanks for the video.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to do the staff report. So as you can see just from Kelly's presentation, the staff continue to be very busy. I did wanna call out just a couple things. As I mentioned in my report, since we put the anti-racism statement out for the community, we've gotten lots of really positive feedback. We're forming a committee at the library level for us to work on staff education and training as well as looking at our organizational policies, processes, and procedures. The Village is also launching an EDI committee and has said that they'll be inviting the library. They're not quite, they haven't officially started anything yet, but that will be coming and we'll continue to work with them. We do have a June 29th program on building bridges across the racial divide. I have to make sure I say it right. We have partnered with the Village and RAIN, which is racial awareness in the North Shore, on that. If you are interested, you can register for it at northbrook.info. We will also be promoting some Juneteenth live streaming options on our website tomorrow. There'll be a list of different resources that patrons can watch or read to learn more about that historic day. I wanted to just see if the board was interested in having a deeper discussion about equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives here at the library and throughout Northbrook? And if so, we can certainly put that on a future board agenda?
Yeah, I think absolutely, as far as just trying to harness the energy that's out there. And I think this is obviously an issue that is with us for a long time as well. Yeah, I would definitely support more outreach.
I would agree, and I would I have to say, I've been missing the displays that the librarians always have on, and I can certainly find recommendations online, but I've been missing those in person. And I'm wondering about the, and not that we're here to promote any sort of like agenda or programming, but any, if there would be a sort of an anti-racism book club opportunity for, maybe one for teens and one for adults?
I know staff have been looking at that. Laurie Siegel with her book discussion group is kind of looking at introducing some more anti-racism themes, but the teen book club too, I can definitely share that with our teen librarian and I'll talk to staff about that as well.
Thank you. You have something else?
I do. I wanted to mention the Fourth of July, it's coming and it isn't completely disappearing. The Village is putting together a drive-up, it's like a reverse parade where people are gonna decorate homes and businesses around the community and then people go get a map and can drive around and see them and vote. We are going to be participating in that. If you recall, our beautiful mole, our summer reading mole, we're gonna have a three-foot tall version of him on the corner of Cedar and Cherry along with a balloon sculpture from a local Northbrook business that we will have there for people to enjoy along with some additional decorations, our marketing staff are working on that as well.
Obviously, we should have a flag.
We will, we will have multiple flags, Carlos, of course. It is the Fourth of July. And then I wanted to share something that we've created for the board. So give me just one second here. Sharon mentioned at our meeting, after our last board meeting, that she felt it would have been really helpful to have some of like the bigger picture stuff more readily available. And so Brody put this together last month, it's a trustee portal and it will have general information, agendas, packets, bylaws, contact information for each board member, for the staff. And then we have just general information. So we have our facility plan. We have the operating budget, the strategic plan, our policy manuals, and then just general library links. So we will be sharing, I'm gonna share this, well Jennifer's gonna send out the link to the board tomorrow. And then each month, when you get your packet, we will share this link with you. So this link will only be available to the board members. And I want, I would like to see if there's any information other than what we currently have on here, of course, that the board would like to see on here. And you don't have to answer now, I know I'm just showing this to you. But if there are things that you think it would be helpful, we can absolutely add those here.
This looks great, thank you, Brody.
Yeah, this is very helpful, because I think having everything in one site is just easier for us as opposed to looking up emails, you know, especially with board packets. So I think just one place to go every month is gonna be super helpful, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, make sure that we do have contact information for the trustees so that they can talk to each other. And please do not send more than one trustee at a time.
One-on-one, so we don't violate the Open Meetings Act.
Kate, is that something that's gonna be updated and then highlighted as it's updated in your reports?
We are not, I'm not gonna link to it in my reports, Jay. So I'll say, for more information, check the board portal. But because my director's report is posted on the public website, we wanted to make this available just to the board, because it has your personal contact information in it. So.
I'm more concerned like, you know, as we go through and month-to-month, make new policies, update?
This will be, this will have the most up-to-date information.
Okay.
Good point, good point. Anything else, Kate?
That is all I have unless anyone has any questions on my report.
Hearing none, we continue. Jay, just a shout to you, nice photo of Lily on the Herald.
Yeah, congratulations.
Got the first copy of the Herald? It's Northbrook Herald. Let's go to the unfinished business, which is a construction project. And I give the board, the video to Anna.
Hello, everyone. I am pleased to announce that all the projects are progressing well and they should all be done prior to us opening the building to patrons. So the study room project, this week, they installed the doors on the study rooms. The furniture will be delivered tomorrow, or next week, sorry. The exterior facade, they're just doing touch-up work on the exterior and the interior, and then the boiler ventilation project, they're waiting on some equipment. So all the projects are progressing well. Does anybody have any questions about those projects?
I think that people don't remember the red color of the library before. But it looks good. We were gonna get photos of before and after.
They're gonna work on those, they're gonna work on those in the next couple of weeks. So they'll show you the pictures before and the pictures after.
Okay, any questions about this? Talking about the boiler ventilation, exterior facade, study rooms, and penthouse renovation, you got photos of that? It looks good. I've asked for some video connections so that people can have, I think that after this Zoom nationwide party, a lot of people will wanna have a video conferences within the the room with other people in other places. And that will be important that we have a possibility of doing that. Depending on demand, we probably will start adding those devices as time comes by. Any other questions? Okay. The reopening plan update. Any more questions on that? You have read some of them, go ahead, Kate.
Do you want me, I can give you a more up-to-date update, because things change very rapidly. So we are still in phase three. Pritzker has hinted that he thinks that we will be entering phase four by the end of the month. So the library will move along with them for phase four. But I wanna give you a few updates on what's happening with phase three. We continue to have a lot of returns, which is of course rather challenging because we have to quarantine for seven days. So Anna has been busting her butt to get enough containers to help circ, to put items in. And we are, we estimate that last week, we had between 15,000 and 20,000 items returned to us that we're now checking in this week. Just to kind of give you a frame of reference, on a normal day, which we're usually open 12 hours, we usually get 2,000 to 3,000 returns. So we essentially got, so we would essentially get between like 8,000 and 15,000 items returned a week during 69 hours. We did this in about 10 hours. So people were like lining up to return items, I think, I keep telling staff, I think that they're channeling Marie Kondo, they wanna get the stuff out of their house. We did start our soft curbside service this week. So everyone that has had holds waiting since March, were able to come and pick items up. It is a contactless delivery where we will be just delivering, putting the items outside on a table. We're giving people specific spots to go to, to pick up their items so that staff don't have to interact directly with patrons. We'll be starting our official curbside next week, which will mean people that have put holds on in the last couple weeks will be able to start picking, picking items up. We have 600 pickup spots available during the week currently. They are almost all full, so we're monitoring that on a daily basis to see if we need to expand. We've had over 3,300 holds placed in the last week. And on an average, I shouldn't say that, we had 3,300 items sitting on our shelves waiting that were placed on hold. On an average day, we were normally around 1,500 to 150 to 200 holds. So you can imagine the increase that we're experiencing. So staff are hard at work, we have staff from all departments helping manage curbside, manage returns, making sure that we are getting things done as quickly and safely as possible. While we're doing all of that, we continue to offer our remote phone service. Our phone service has definitely picked up over the last week since we announced curbside. We're averaging about 300 calls a day, which staff are answering at home through our Ring Central app. But we're also continuing to get ready for stage, for phase four. We have a number of items on order, including Plexiglas shields for staff, signage for the floors. As you probably all know, deliveries on many things are delayed just because it's taking a lot longer to get stuff. Anna continues to be really on top of ordering additional PPE so that we have enough hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, gloves, and we're using reusable masks. So staff all have those already, so we can make sure that we can interact safely with the patrons. The plan is still to open the building, if the governor does announce phase four on July 20th. It will be open limited hours. We will be cordoning off all of the shelves. We have not received the results from the Realm Project study yet to determine whether or not it is safe to allow patrons to interact with the items on the shelves. And so we're cordoning those off, staff will be manning the service desk. People can come up and say, I want this specific item, we will get it. Or they can ask and say, you know, I'm looking for some good mysteries. And staff will choose some that the patrons can then look at and choose whether or not to check out. We are planning to start, restart our homebound delivery service. And we'll be letting people that are homebound and vulnerable populations know that they can get deliveries. So that will be, that will be starting in a few weeks as well.
Kate, can I ask a question on that? I think before, when you were doing that at the beginning of the pandemic, it was only people that had previously used the service?
We're gonna allow new people, we have a system in place that will allow for new people to use it because we recognize that there are people that have become homebound during this process. And we wanna make sure that they can still access stuff to keep them occupied.
So, okay, so there'll be like some explanation in terms of who would qualify and how they can do that then?
Correct, yeah, we should have that coming out. I would like, we're gonna be starting that in July. So the information, marketing is just getting stuff detailed. We're finalizing all the instructions and everything next week. Staff have been working on, you know, because we were kind of turning into a logistics company, right? Because we had to figure out how to do a delivery model and we segmented Northbrook and, you know, assigned shifts and all that fun stuff. So that should be coming out probably in like a week, week and a half.
Okay.
Do you want me to send it to you when it's available, Abby?
Um, I was just curious if new people are gonna be able to join? Because like you said, I know that there's people that would wanna take advantage of that now that didn't necessarily need it before, so I think that's great.
Yeah. And so we, as we are making all of these plans, we are putting the safety of staff and patrons first and foremost. We will be requiring everyone that enters the library to wear a mask. If they do not have a mask, we will have disposable masks for them to wear. Under the law, if we require people to enter the building wearing a mask, but there are people that are medically unable to wear a mask, we will be offering them accommodations, of course, and complying with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so we worked out scenarios to cover the different services that they might need to utilize if they can't wear a mask and have systems in place for that as well. So I'm gonna stop talking, that was a lot. Does anyone have any questions about the reopening plan or can I clarify anything?
Make sure that if Van Gogh comes in, you have a mask that goes all around so that...
Oh, Carlos, I have some bad news.
Van Gogh is dead, yes.
He is.
Could you please report to the board, what you talked to me about? The permanence of the virus on reading materials, the study that's being done?
Sure. Sure, so, so the Realm Project, as it is called, is a combination of OCLC, which the Institute for Museum and Library Services and VITAL Labs. And so they are studying how the virus lives specifically on library materials. Unlike with businesses or grocery stores where your per- Unlike with businesses or grocery stores where you're purchasing an item and you're leaving the store and you're not bringing it back, the library is a continual circulation of materials. And so we want to make sure that the materials we're circulating are safe for patrons and staff. And so one of the things that they're, they're currently studying five types of materials, and will continue to study more, they have three pages of things that they're going to be testing. And so the first part of the study is studying a hardcover book, a paperback book, a page of a book, a DVD case, because it's plastic, and I've forgotten the fifth item. There is a fifth item that they are also testing. And so they will be letting us know hopefully soon, they said like mid-June, they were hoping for some preliminary results, we haven't heard anything yet. They're hoping that they'll be able to tell us what we need to do to quarantine, whether we can open our stacks, and what we need to do to ensure things are safe. They have already ruled out wiping down materials, they've recommended that that is not safe for the materials, they've said UV light is also damaging, and won't get into each and individual page. They said, right now their recommendation is that the best thing to do is to give it time, which is why we're doing a seven-day quarantine. You may hear of other libraries in other states doing a one-day or a three-day, we're doing the seven-day based on guidance from this study and from the Rails Library System. The Executive Director of Rails is also on the steering committee for this study, so we get really up-to-date information, which is great.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions?
I have a quick question about, in addition to opening the library, what's the plan for having staff coming back to work, like people in technical services that traditionally...
Oh, they're there. So.
Is it like, do we have to change the workspace, like what's, like?
Yeah, no, those are great questions.
To have them, yeah, come back to work?
Yeah, so the way we have it structured right now, we mostly have circulation and technical services staff. As I mentioned earlier, we have other staff from other departments helping CIRC, so they're coming in on an as-needed basis. So right now, Technical Services has been working in the building. It's, oh no, are you okay?
I'm fine. Choking on a candy.
Okay, don't choke. Is Sandy there to give you the Heimlich?
No, she's not.
Okay, so they've been coming in since June 1st. We have staff scheduled to work in teams, so they work either three and a half hours in the morning if they're Team North, or three and a half hours in the afternoon if they're Team Brook. We have an hour lag in between to give maintenance time to come in and wipe down high-touch surfaces, doorknobs, railings, et cetera. Moving forward, starting next week, we're going to actually add a third shift and do an evening shift and a weekend shift, just because there's so much demand for the curbside, we needed to be able to bring more staff in, but we needed to be able to do it safely. So in our reopen plan, we list how many staff are allowed in each area, we've measured off all of the desks to ensure that there's six foot of distance. All staff are of course wearing masks and gloves when they're handling materials, everyone has access to hand sanitizer and face shields if they want them. So we think moving forward, one of the challenges with opening the building and being open all the hours we usually are is just, are we able to staff it? Which is why we're going to be open limited hours to start, just so that we can stagger the staff and not have too many people in the building at one time.
So, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Abby.
So when you do the staffing, are you, I don't, I don't remember if we talked about this last time, are you doing it in shifts so that people are like, you're on week one, you have like a block of people, and then the next block of people as opposed to different people coming in every day?
So what we did was, we split every department into, everyone in every department into Team North and Team Brook. And so Team North is working in the morning, Team Brook is working in the afternoon. And so what we do is, we're doing, we have, maintenance is wiping down stuff in the middle of the day, and then we have our cleaning crew wiping down stuff at the end of the day. Now that we're going to be opening a third shift up, we're going to have maintenance wiping in between that time as well. And so, so right now, North is all morning, Brook is all afternoon. That, as we move forward, will be, will be adjusting slightly based on what we need in order to get people in the building and making sure that people don't have to work like every evening.
Right.
Any questions?
Just one more question, Kate. When, when you said we shift to phase four, the library starts to open up, patients can come back, are you going to be limiting the number of patrons coming in?
Oh, yes, thanks, Kate, I should have mentioned that, yes. So we have analyzed the square footage, as I'm sure most of you know, the DCEO guidelines specify you can have five people for every thousand square feet of public space. So we have an 87,000 square foot building, but because we're going to be coordinating off all of the shelves, we, I, that says that we could have like 435 people in the building, which is crazy. And so what we did was, we looked at the square footage for each department after we cordoned off all the shelves and determined the max number of people in the building at any one time, which is 50. So we'll have someone monitoring the door, we're going to have everyone come in and out the east side, so we can count the number of people and have 50, maximum 50 people in the building. That doesn't include staff. We would, based on kind of the plan I put together, we could, we'll have maximum, and this would be rare, 40 staff in the building, so we'd have less than 100 people in the full building.
More questions?
Will people sign up for a time, or you're just going to turn people away if it's over it?
Yeah, we'll have social distancing markers outside that they can stand and wait if they choose, or they can choose to come back. You know, it was interesting, because I, I was looking at a heat map of our busiest times in the library, and honestly, it's pretty steady throughout the entire day. There's a little dip between 11 and 1, but for the rest of the time, it's pretty consistent, the number of people that are coming in each hour. So we're hoping that people will, that we're giving people enough hours, we're going to have some evening hours, some weekend hours, but that will, that will give people enough variety that they'll be able to choose a time that works and that it won't be too crowded. I also think, not to like, I'm happy that we're going to be able to let people back in, but it's not going to be the library people are used to. You're not going to come in and hang out and look at stuff, it's going to be grab-and-go, you know, getting stuff really quickly. We're basically blocking off all of youth services because they, they touch everything with their mouths, which is how they learn, we just don't want them getting sick in the library. So.
Is there a, and I'm assuming it would just be more of a delivery service, but would, is there talk about having a window of time where people who are elderly are vulnerable?
Yes. Yes, so we're going to have three days a week where the first hour that we're open is going to be reserved for vulnerable populations. We're not stipulating an age, because a vulnerable population, of course, might be someone who's immunocompromised, or who has another type of disability that makes it very challenging for them to be in there at a different time. We, we wanted to do it the first hour of the day because we know then that no one has been in there, the cleaning crew was in the night before, and it will be the cleanest it can be.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I have three, three comments, Kate. At the beginning, when you start this new program, there may be people that do not get the gist of how it's done, and there may be people that try to push and say, well, I just came to do this and, and I'm getting out, and so perhaps for the first week, you should have some security.
Carlos, you read my mind, Anna has already contacted the security company to have someone that can help us with that. We've also alerted the police department to give them a heads up. We obviously want to be really careful not to treat anyone inequitably, but we do recognize that not everyone sees this as a problem.
The second item that I have is that before you open in July, maybe a good PR piece with photos of how the library looks, so people don't get surprises. You know, the plastic panels, the cover of the shelves, the, the way that people would be moving so that they get a picture before they come in, because if they come and it's all different, we may have some issues. My final comment is that although Illinois is probably one of the best states in the decline of cases that we have in the nation, thank you Governor Pritzker, I, I've read and I've seen other places and other countries that have seen a spike going up again. And to give you an idea, I don't, I'm going to be president of the Rotary Club, and I don't think that we are going to be live on our meetings until November. We have an elderly population that is at risk, and you know, we may have to do different types of things to allow for that spike if, if it comes. If it doesn't come, fabulous, great, no problem, but if it comes, we should be prepared. Okay. We're going to, the last item of business, which is adjusting the board meetings on July and August. Are you guys comfortable at 7:30? Would you like a different time, like maybe before dinner? You know, our meetings are, now we're 40 minutes, they're probably not going to be more than an hour, an hour and a half at the very most if we have big issues, but we, we don't expect many big issues, so any ideas on what would you be more comfortable if we changed the time? Would you like 5 o'clock, 5:30, 6, 6:30, 7? I see you shaking your head, Abby, I cannot hear you shaking your head, but I see it.
Five or 5:30 would be too early, I think, for me, I'm actually still working.
Okay, how about 6?
I could do some 6 or 6:30 or 7.
Okay, any preference?
I would say keeping it at 7:30 or maybe 7, but.
Yeah, I would say 6:30 or 7, if you want to just make it a little bit earlier, 6:30 or 7.
I agree, yeah.
Because folks are probably eating dinner at 6, so, you know.
7:30 works for me, too. I'm certainly not going out.
I prefer it earlier than this, but any time really works.
You'd say, you said you would prefer earlier?
Yeah, I would prefer, like, any earlier would be better, generally speaking, but yeah.
Okay. Raise your hand if you would like 7 o'clock. Okay, I see four out of, yeah, okay, me too. How about, raise your hand if you like 6:30?
Can you raise your hand twice? I mean, both.
Yes, you can, yes, you can. Okay, are you raising both hands, Jay?
We only get one vote, Jay.
So, can we move the meeting then to 7 o'clock? Everybody will be happy with that? Yes, yes?
Yes, and can someone remind us, because I'm sure that I won't forget, but.
No, don't worry, Brody's going to bombard you with emails.
Is that just July and August, or is that moving forward?
For the moment, it's July and August.
Okay.
Okay?
Got it.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Carlos, we do need an official motion and second and vote on that.
Okay. I'd like to hear a motion to move the meetings to 7 o'clock.
Motion, 7.
Okay, I saw Abby, but his speech comes after his mouth, or before. Abby, is the, the motion, and a second, please.
Carlos, just to clarify, the way the motion stands right now, this would be changing the meetings permanently moving forward to 7, unless you specify that it would just be for July and August.
I'd like to revise my motion. Can I revise my motion?
Yes.
Revise my motion, move the board meetings to 7 o'clock for July and August 2020 only.
Thank you, second.
A second.
Thank you, Jay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Krishan?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
And Mr. Fromm?
Thank you, yes. Motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn.
Did you want to do the agenda building for next month?
What, what is that?
Just tell us if you want something.
I was just going to share that, so we'll have the construction project updates, reopening plan, we'll be approving the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, and then just today, I got a note that there is, Governor Pritzker has announced that November 3, 2020 is being defined as a state holiday, and that all governmental agencies must be closed on that day, so I'm waiting to hear whether or not, unless you're a polling place, I'm waiting to hear from our attorney whether or not that includes libraries, so we may have that on the agenda as well if we have to officially add that to our closing schedule. And then I'll add EDI, a discussion about EDI, the EDI stuff we're doing as well.
I just wanted to surprise them. Okay, any other items for the agenda for July?
I just had a question, this information about Ginny Beauty was purely informational only?
Oh, no, you might not have seen the, so the Village sent a note to us yesterday saying that the application had been withdrawn, so they no longer needed anyone to weigh in.
It was like over half the packet.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
Let me hear your opinions on that. About the, this, that particular building and the, it seems to be, you probably read the packet, but you know, we are not going to vote. Any comments?
I didn't read the packet, Carlos, once I saw the email saying we didn't need to.
Yeah, I very, very quickly skimmed through it once it said disregard.
All right, then, give you a motion to adjourn.
Come on. Do adjourn.
No, we want to stick around.
I second the motion to adjourn.
We can have a Zoom social. Okay, Jennifer, please roll call.
Ms. Krishan?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parzey?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes, and Brody, have we had any public in, on Zoom? Man, we cannot draw public for nothing.
No, but we have, we have staff that are very interested in, in board activities, and so we've had, most of our attendees have been staff. So shout out to the staff that have, learning more about the library governance, but no, we've had no, no members of the public.
Just tell staff that we are more interested in what they do, they do more than we do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay well. Stay safe.
Be healthy.
Bye.